Adam 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Ehrler and Kalanowski Inc. for a well 15 replacement project in an amount not to exceed $606,000.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, good evening. I have here with me Ving Wong, who is the project manager for this well replacement project, and also Mark Renhart, what a resource manager, who led the effort for the prior two phases of this project, with Eaton Pump Assessment of the condition of the pump, and also the site assessment and the site analysis for this project. I will summarize why this project is important, what is the project, and what the financial consequences of the project is. The city provides drinking water to our city residents. The water comes from two sources: surface water purchased from SFPUC and from groundwater produced by our wells. Historically, the city consumption is around 4.1, 4.2 million gallon per day. The city has a guaranteed allocation from the surface water through SFPUC's contract for a 3.2 MGD. I will use MGD from now on, which really means million gallon per day. If the city will enter in the agreement with SFPUC for the groundwater storage and recovery project, then the city has to have the capability to produce at least 2.1 MGD. Historically, the city maintained a reliable, flexible, redundant system, producing about health of our need versus purchasing health for our need. In order for us to be able to sustain a production level, it's very important for us to maintain our production infrastructures. For production, the city had five wells. The Commodore well, called Well 15, was the oldest well in the city, built in '84. The production of this well started to decrease and reached a point back in 2010, then that the well was decommissioned, and the services of Eaton Pump was retained to assess the cost-benefit analysis of rehabilitation of the wells versus replacement of the well. The conclusion of the assessment was that the expected production rate after the rehabilitation will be low versus the investment cost that wasn't cost-effective to rehabilitate the well. The recommendation was to replace the well. Subsequently, the services of our groundwater management expert consultant was retained to develop a site assessment, having the best understanding and knowledge, developing our groundwater management plan of the hydrogeology of the basin, groundwater basin itself, and to make recommendation what would be the best sites for replacing the well. They analyzed six different sites, and you have a very detailed staff report, and all of those sites are described in the staff report. Their recommendation at the end of the analysis was to recommend two sites, Commodore and Orchstone, at the Orchstone site. The reason for recommending those two sites was based on the combination of different criteria, mainly the expected production level, water quantity, and also the expected water quality at those sites, and including the land use around those two sites, and the degree of impact on the surrounding environment of those two locations. The recommended plan for this project is to, after the design of the two test well, to drill the two test well, to analyze the information from these two test wells about the water production, the expected production level, the water quality at those two sites, based on that information, then to design, and then to drill the production well, and then to design, and then build the wellhead facilities. In April of this year, the department went out with a request for proposal for expert and consultant support for the development and implementation of the project, and the city received three proposals. One from EKI, the consultant who supported the city with the development of our urban water management last year, having a high degree of understanding and knowledge about our water system. Vestios, who is supporting us right now, developing our water master plan, and RMC, the consultant who helped us with the development of the groundwater management plan, and also he's working with us right now for the sewer master plan. The selection team recommended EKI. The reason why they recommended EKI among three very strong consultant team was that EKI came to the table with some cost savings ideas, lowering the pressure level in the system, and lowering the investment cost, and also the ongoing maintenance and operation cost for the well. And also based on the strong team, what they are bringing to this project, and having on the team itself one of the best expert in well design in the region. Based on those reasons, it's our recommendation to award this contract for a total of $600,000 to EKI, who will provide us with the following: they will design and support us during the development, design, and the implementation of the two test wells. Then they will make the interpretation of the information and the result of the test well, develop the documentation and the B-document for the production well. They are providing field support and construction support for the drilling of the production well, and they will design and develop the B-document for the wellhead facilities. In addition to these contract services, the city will need to go out for construction contract for drilling the two test well, and then a second contract for drilling the production well, and a third contract for the wellhead facility construction. The total cost estimate for this project is 3.2 million, all of those, including the design step time and the construction for this project. Based on our assessment, this investment would be returned in about five years. Also, to test the financial consequences of the policy alternatives for difference level of ratio between purchased water and produced water by the city, our financial consultant for the 10-year financial plan was retained to provide us with some financial assessment of those alternatives. This consultant, this financial consultant, helped us with the 10-year financial plan, which was the base to set the rates back in the spring of this year. The study concluded that the cost to produce water in the city is lower than purchasing water, even with the cost of the investment for sustaining the production infrastructure, the wells itself. Reason why is to keep the overall cost of water for our residents as low as possible is our recommendation tonight, to replace this well, Well 15, and to make this investment for the long-term sustainability of our water production and our system. In our CIP, this project was estimated with the $3.2 million. A $40,000 already was spent on this project. You still have available $930,000 appropriated available for this year, which, based on our expectation, will be enough for the work needed to be done this year, and support of the next year's CIP budget appropriation, additional funding will be requested, us included already in our CIP project. With that, that would be my presentation, and all three of us will stand for any question that you might have.
Good. Any questions of staff? Michael?
Thank you. When we get these design requests, I always try to figure out what a reasonable estimate is, and one thing I try to look at is the design cost versus the construction cost, and see if it's within a general percentage. Generally, I think most of Public Works projects come in right around 20% of construction, so that's kind of a guideline I can at least use to rationalize some of these numbers. In this case, I think it's around 30%. So, to me, it was like, okay, well, this is kind of an expensive design. And initially, when I was reading this, I thought that it included some of the test wells, actually constructing the test wells, but then in your breakdown, you show that that's actually part of the $2 million request, and it looks like this project, the design project, will overlap with that $2 million project, and so the design includes some design portions that are actually part of that construction, or at least the timing, these things are going to overlap, and so maybe it's a little different in that perspective. But maybe you could just explain a little bit more on, over the two years, what we're getting for our $600,000, and what level of support we should expect, how many people will be on the team, what their involvement will be on a day-to-day basis, just to try to help me rationalize the cost.
I have here a very detailed breakdown of the $606,000. This project, this well project, is more an interactive type of project than any other typical project, that you have all of the information, and then you are using that information, and you are designing the project, then you are building the project. Here, you need additional information as part of the development of the project itself, that you really need additional information on production rates, a layer from here, you have higher production rate, water quality, and based on those additional information during the project development, then you are analyzing those additional data, and you are using for the next phase implementation. And this contract includes all of the support what the city will need, except the construction of the wellhead facility. Everything is, that additional estimate is included in the total cost, but it's not included in this $606,000. The size of the team will be defined, you have the general consultant, who will provide the project management, EKI, and you have two subconsultants for this project. And how I indicated before, one of the key reasons why this consultant was recommended is the availability of one of the best well experts in the region, who will support on needed, as needed basis, the development of the project. Also, it's a very strong civil design team, who will provide the civil engineering design for the project. The $606,000 include obtaining all of the permits beside construction management, design support, and design services. These $606,000 also include project management support, obtaining all of the permits needed, analyzing the data in the field, including public outreach and support in our public outreach effort, when and how much is needed.
Do you have any idea historically, when the initial well here at Commodore was constructed, more or less what we spent on design for that one?
I don't have the information, unfortunately, for the Commodore, but I know that Ving Wong was the project manager for the construction of Well 20.
He's been around a while.
And the cost for that well was around $2,100, $2,200 was the cost of that well, was in 2003?
Well 20, near the Lions Field, that was constructed around 2003, and as I can recall, the total cost of the well is slightly over $2 million. And for the consultant costs, the initial contract was $200,000, and later during the wellhead facility design phase and treatment phase, we have to add another $100,000 into the contract. So the total, I would say, design cost, consultant cost, is about $300,000.
Okay. So, given that figure, is there anything particular about this particular area that we're considering drilling in, or some other factors that would really justify, or are we just talking about doing more, doing better? Because that's pretty much half of what we're looking at right now.
I think our intent is to do it better. It's my understanding that the design and the implementation of Well 20 had some challenges at that time, and it's our intent to prevent all of the challenges that that project, that the city faced during the implementation of that well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ken?
I was just whispering into the mayor's here, I remember the development of the crossings, and that we did, one of the conditions was to carve out a little area for, you know, for a future well. My question is along the lines of my colleague here, is that since Lions Field was the last well nearly 10 years ago, and I remember us sitting here and discussing the new type of well that was going to go into Lions Field, that was different than what is at Cypress at City Park. Where has well design come now in 10 years? You know, and obviously, the construction is about the same, but now the consultant cost, the design cost, you know, are a lot higher. I'm sure they know a lot more, and they're studying a lot more, and hopefully, they'll last longer and produce longer. But can you tell us laypeople, what is the new, new and improved well design now?
This will be a very different well versus the wells designed before, and I will let Mark, who is so passionate about these wells, just to give him the opportunity to explain to you in the layman terms. Mark?
Your question was, what's the difference between?
Mike, what I'd like to know is, since our residents are going to be footing the bill for this, and this is a big-ticket item, $3 million, what is their assurances that this is a good investment, that this well is going to be state-of-the-art in comparison to, you know, the one that it's replacing?
Um...
And what was, you know, how much better is it than what we installed in 2003?
It's going to be similar to what we installed, but this one's not going to be piecemeal together like it was before. It was designed just for the wellhead at that time, and wasn't designed for filtration. So, that's included in the design, and also the construction support is in there, which wasn't in the 2003 design. So, there's a lot of added, everything's going to be done, I think, at a higher professional level than it was at Well 20. We had a lot of problems during construction because of the design, so I think you can get a lot better design on this one. I'm looking at, I looked at both, and this one's a lot better, the proposal.
I'd like to elaborate on that regarding the improvement of different types of well. Previous wells, the 15, 16, 17, 18, those wells were constructed using what they call a line shaft type of wells. And that means the motor and the pumps is at the bottom of the well, and a submersible pump with a cable going to the top. And with those wells, when the motor breaks down, you have to dismantle the entire column one section at a time to pull the motor up, and that's increased the maintenance cost, increased the time it takes to repair. Lions Field was a different technology, where it is called the turbine pump, and with Lions Field, the motor sits on the very top of the well. So if something were to break with the motor, you can dismantle it right there without taking the entire column pipe, which is about 600 feet, one section at a time to pull up the motor. So that was the advantage. And at that time, yes, Lions Field is a more advanced, state-of-the-art, because of also the scator control, which allow remote control monitoring of the equipment, the second, a room to house a standby generator, a really large generator, soundproof building, treatment design, a green sand treatment to remove manganese and iron. So, to answer your question, yes, Lions Field is a much more advanced well than 15, 16, 17, and 18. And I believe you have a correct mark, that this new well, the 15, the new 15 well, would be prototype under the Well 20 Lions Field well design, which would also be an above-ground turbine drive.
It's called a vertical line shaft, and it's got separate bearings all the way down, 600 feet, Well 20, and it's about the same depth, I think it's about 580, Well 15. So, yeah, you can easily take that motor, it's off a shelf motor, replace it with a brand new one, whereas the submersible is probably about $100,000 for a new one, opposed to, you know, maybe five to 10 for a motor that sits on top. And like I also said, they're going to be designing for the green sands appropriately. We actually took the old, the filters from 15, the old 15, and put them in Well 20, and they're a little undersized, so we're going to make sure that that's all done properly this time. We had some issues last time. I think the design team is going to do an excellent job. That's why we selected them. So, I don't know.
Thank you.
Little staff.
To the chair, I'm just going to echo about the, it's already been talked about, and I think some answers have been given. I think Mark alluded to some additional items that are being included in this design that weren't in the prior Lions well. I have heard the same thing, so I appreciate the frankness and honesty, that there were some learning curves, growing pains, we'll call them, with Lions well, and so I'm assuming if this is the best, who's available, and all of those good things that I've heard here tonight, then this should be able to be taken care of, and we shouldn't have those again, or see, or hear, or have contingency issues, or change orders, since we've had those growing pains and learning experiences. Would that kind of be a fair assessment?
That is our expectation, and that's how was made the recommendation in selecting this team, that this team really will help the city to develop a well with top of the line, with maximum production level possible, and with a longer life cycle also. level possible and with a longer life cycle also than our prior wells. I would add one other advantage, having two test wells in the same, in this time and collecting information for both of those sites. If the city will have the intent to develop in the future and any additional well, then the information already will be available for a additional site.
Just like to clarify, I heard the council member ask or suggest that the well construction could be done without contingency and potentially without change order. I would say that that is not what staff is suggesting in proposing that a thoughtful design process will, to the best of our knowledge and based on our learning from the experience we had with Well Twenty and using Well Twenty as a prototype for a new type, a new and more efficient and better type of well construction, that we do anticipate a more efficient well design and development process. But I'd like to be clear that we do also anticipate presenting you a construction contract, which will include a contingency, which will be expected to cover any necessary change orders that arise during the construction of that well.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm referring mostly to the design, but with the holiday season, you know, one can hope.
All right. Anything else?
To the chair, I had one last question. Is there an opportunity that we could look at, at using some sort of alternative energy associated with this well without dramatically impacting the construction cost, whether that be solar or wind or something that could be incorporated into this project?
One, one of the recommendation and the reason why this team was chosen, they already came, came with energy saving recommendation for this project. And also is a parallel effort for us to look at alternative energy savings and energy alternative for all of our sites. Will be our intent to make sure that, that thinking will be incorporated in our design.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else? Any action by the council?
To the chair, I will introduce the resolution for a vote.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.